All right, we're back after a short break to change the tape. Item 10, I think we're up to is committee reports, a policy committee, I'm sure you've fully reported.
I think we're done.
Operations committee, is there anything else?
I think we've covered it.
Liaison from the high school building committee.
We're going to be working to schedule a tour for the Board of Education. Beyond that, the building committee continues their work.
Okay. Any other town liaison committees, anything else that needs to be talked about tonight? Okay, item 11, public questions.
My name's Marion Breeze, 42 Arrowhead Drive here in Guilford. Couple of questions first about the survey. I just wanted to clarify, as a parent, my understanding of what the survey could entail and ask a question about it. I think parents do know what their child's experience is, whether or not they know about the Common Core, or whether it's a state issue, or a local issue, or a national issue. My understanding was that the point of the survey was to really get feedback from parents on what their experience and what their child's experience this year was. So I just wanted to clarify if that's what the Board of Ed and what the GPS administration's understanding was.
I think you were here when we were talking about it.
Right.
I think that there were probably, if not eight different sets of thoughts about that, there were at least six. So I think that's something that's going to have to be formulated, is we talk to the potential vendor anyway, and see what can be asked in a way that would make sense, and that would give us some information that would be useful.
I guess my question is, when you talk to him, and you said he asked, what is the goal of the survey? I was just curious, since there's six or seven different opinions, what do you feel the goal of the survey should be?
What I took away from the last conversation when the suggestion was made was that there's an interest in what was the quality of the experience this past school year, school year 13-14, and an interest about how are the Common Core state standards affecting that experience here in school? And it's that intersection that I think we are going to need help in shaping.
I agree. As a parent, I would just say, I think it's really about what the, in order to get that partnership between parents, administration, students, and the Board of Ed and GPS staff, what would be most helpful is to really ask parents, what is your experience from the Common Core? And don't, keep it simple, and just make sure that the questions are around that. And then you avoid some of the complications that we ran into tonight. So that was one question.
Well, I think I can also follow up, that I think one of the theories is that he would come down here and spend some time with us and other people, talking about how to put this together. You know, I think that we'd probably be in a better position to answer that question after that meeting.
Right. I just, when you first formulate that question very early on, and when you state what the goal is, I think that's probably one of the most important things that can happen. So when he comes in with a certain sort of assumption, based on the conversation with Dr. Freeman, I would just say that, given that there were six or seven different opinions, that the simpler it is, and more direct to the parent experience, that might be helpful.
He's going to meet with parents, not just with me.
Oh, I get it, sure.
And then, something was brought up about listening, and then there was some discussion about listening versus actionable items. And I think that, in part of that listening piece, are you, were you saying that when you're listening to parents, are you, is there, are you looking for actionable items from parents, or just, is it just open listening? If you understand what I mean.
I'm not sure I do, but I think-
I think I understand the question, and I think Mr. Kazin, I think summarized it the best. I think what we're trying to do is have a two-pronged approach. I think that we have, we have talked about creating multiple opportunities, six, now seven with the addition of the board evening, where we simply sit and listen, and do it in a focus group conversational setting, and actually chart what we're hearing. So people get a chance to tell us what they're experiencing, or wondering, or thinking they need to know more about, and we're making the effort only to summarize and chart that, and did we get it right? Very much like we ran focus groups before beginning the principal search committees. What are you looking for, and did I get it correct? That is open, and just giving people a chance to express what their experience has been, and express what their wonders or concerns are, and we don't explain or answer, we just listen. The survey then-
Yeah, and then we can have dialogue.
And then have an interaction. The survey, I think, is a different tool, and it is difficult to give just open-ended questions on a survey tool. Surveys are generally scaled, and you're trying to compose data from them. And that, with that tool, is where I suggested that we want to try to target actionable data, so that we're listening, I think, in both ways.
Okay. Then, one other question I had with regard to curriculum and graduation requirements. I'm not, I will talk based on my son's experience, but I think this applies to the class of 2018, and possibly to classes beyond that. My son was given a choice of taking two math classes his freshman year, in order to take chemistry his freshman year, and to be on that track. He's not going to do that. But in past years, my older daughter took a summer course at Hopkins to move ahead in Spanish, and it was very successful for her, and it had a wonderful impact on her high school experience in Guilford High School. And my question is, in the current Guilford High School program of studies, it says that a summer course in math is not acceptable for moving on to the next level of math. And I'm just wondering why, if a course is offered in the summer at Hopkins, at UConn, at Southern, if those, if it passes their requirements, why wouldn't a summer course be acceptable for a high school student to take, to take that math course in the summer? And would you consider changing that in the curriculum, particularly for students who've been put in this position of having to choose to take two math courses a freshman year, or never be on that track in their high school career?
That is something that we would have to discuss with the high school. I'm not prepared to answer that, you know, just right now, but I would be happy to discuss that with them. That is probably a, something that was proposed by the department, and I had to get the rationale and-
I wouldn't want to answer that without the math department at the high school being part of that conversation.
Absolutely understood. If you would be willing to get back to the parents on that issue, just because I think if it's acceptable for Hopkins, and acceptable as a college course, I'm not sure I understand why a student wouldn't have the opportunity to take a math class in the summer and have that count.
We will make sure that that's communicated to the parents coming in. It probably won't come from our office, it'll come from the high school office. But it may be something around the difference between role language credits versus math, or English Language Arts, I don't know.
Okay.
But we will, I will check.
I do think that's a really good question, though, just given what we've heard about the transition. You know, I mean, I just feel like I've heard from parents that feel, you know-
No, I think it's a good question, too.
It's a very good question, but remember, the graduation requirements are not set by Guilford.
Correct.
They're set by the state of Connecticut. And it may be, I mean, I'm just speculating here, there may be that the state of Connecticut doesn't count toward graduation requirements, a class taken not at a accredited high school.
But they could count it for placement.
I don't know.
I think we need to look into it. I think we need to look in the difference between eight or 10 weeks in the full school year. The foreign language is intriguing, because why is it acceptable in some areas, not other? Is the state treating math and English Language Arts and Science and History differently? So it is absolutely a good question. We need to look into it before we can answer, I don't think we can answer it here tonight.
You got to put that on your list for the high achieving winners.
Well, there's some research we can do at the state level, and talk to the math department at the high school as well.
Just two quick things. One, the bus accident. I was a parent who was here that night. Mr. Sands, I share your concerns. I think it's extremely important that when you look at the future contract negotiations, that there is an hour limit set. When you have bus drivers driving students at 10 or 11 at night, as a parent, I sincerely hope that that driver has not been on since 6:00 that morning. There was a lot of discussion among the chaperones, who were there that night, that the bus driver was surprised that she was being asked to stay until 11 o'clock at night, and wasn't aware of that at the time that she was dropping the kids off in Waterbury. So I think it's an extremely important question, and I'm really glad you asked. And finally, one last thing. My daughter's going to kill me for this, but there were four students who were selected by Girls State to represent Guilford High School, and one of those daughters, one of those students, my daughter, has been selected to be at Girls Nation, and represent Connecticut as one of the senators, and will be meeting President Obama next week.
Terrific, congratulations.
Sorry, Allison.
This strikes me, we ought to invite her to say the September board meeting.
Good evening. My name's Mark McCoyack, Matt 54, Chestnut Grove. I have three boys, fourth grader incoming, sixth grader incoming, and an eighth grader incoming. And I'm going to, I'll save my comments because, or my opinions on Common Core due to time and four minutes for questions, but I will say I'm unimpressed. And it's not because I've read something on the internet, it's because of what I've seen in their homework that comes home, and the, some of the studies that they do. But that's discussion for another time. So here are my questions, and I think there was a comment as far as the history of the rollout. Jody Rell, and some of the governors, accepting relief from No Child Left Behind, taking, and accepting possibly the Race to the Top money, and also the fact that you can, if you have state standards that allow for college career readiness, you would get relief from No Child Left Behind. So I think those are the square facts, roughly. So my question is, number one, so for Guilford, and maybe it's a discussion for Governor Malloy next time, is how much in Race to the Top money is Guilford receiving for taking on these highly debatable and cumbersome new curriculum, new standards, whatever you'd like to call them? What are the dollar numbers?
I can answer that, zero.
Zero.
Connecticut, the entire state of Connecticut got zero.
Okay.
And look, you can argue that the state, back in 2010, made a mistake by doing what it did, but unfortunately, Connecticut was not awarded any Race to the Top money.
Okay, so we talked about possibly arguing about mistakes, and the whole notion that Common Core is out of your control, and then the marketing is, while there's so much flexibility in Common Core, so you can start to see, as a parent, the conflation talk about, that's where it comes from. Number two, college career readiness. I would think, from some of the awards we talk about, the advanced education in Guilford, these kids are college-ready, they're getting jobs, and statistically, if you put them in subgroups against international benchmarks, they'd be in the top. That's how it works. And I know that for a fact. So why do we have to have Common Core, the product, put together by the National Government Association, CCSO, a product brought in and distributed to the school? I don't, I just don't understand why you're doing this. And maybe that's, you can't answer that right now.
Why are we doing this?
Because the state of Connecticut requires us to meet the standard.
It requires you to have college career ready, to get relief from No Child Left Behind, and possibly to have been considered for grant money for Race to the Top. Why do you have to go out to the product, produced and owned, and put under reps and warranties, limitations on liability? Why do you have to put that and distribute it into the schools? Isn't there, we already, we've already established that Guilford isn't, that you're going to the superintendent of across the nation of like distribution schools, these are top districts, we're already there. What I don't get is why we have to have this new product going into the schools, new curriculum, new math. I mean, what I've seen, and I went to public schools, I have a minor in applied math from college, and I can do math pretty well, because it's part of what I do for a living. I have a third grader coming home, a fifth grader, and we do math one way, then we have to do it another way, and then I have to do it a third way. It's cumbersome, it's not rigorous, it's clumsy, it's cumbersome, that's not rigorous. It's busy work. So I'm starting to go off on my opinions, and I apologize for that. So I'd love to know, I'd love to get a list of the colleges that my fourth graders should be thinking about. The careers my soon-to-be sixth grader, what should we, we should be thinking about? Wouldn't you agree if somebody said, here's my product, it's going to make you college career ready? Okay, what colleges, what careers? I don't think I'm unreasonable, maybe you do, but I'll move on. SBAC assessment. It's on the Guilford Public website, that 250,000 folks are invited to now help set, what is it called, achievement levels for this test. Park and SBAC got 300 million, or 375 million in grants to do all their work, and you, here we are, school year is going to start in a month and a half, and we're just trying to figure out the level of achievements that we think are appropriate. I don't, I wish there was an answer, I don't know if you have an answer as to why? That's my question. When we have, what is it, the National Assessment on Educational Progress, I believe that's what it's called, it's another test, it's been around for a long time, and there are levels of achievement right there. We're reinventing things and wasting time, in my opinion. Couple other things.
Can we just clarify that, though, because, I mean, the smarter balance is required also. We have to have one of two, there's two options. NEAP is not one of them, right? Smarter Balance?
Smarter Balance, or Park, Connecticut's signed on to the Smarter Balance consortium.
Again, it's a state mandate.
State mandate, and again, we talk about flexibility, but then we talk about no flexibility because of mandates. But my real question is, why aren't the levels already set?
I'm sorry, could you clarify, the levels of what?
Levels of achievement.
The test hasn't existed.
We have, I mean, one of the things we did this past year was field test.
This was supposed to be research-based.
But, once again, unfortunately, certainly those of us who are researchers, and perhaps all of us are frustrated by that, unfortunately, it is in fact one of those things that is out of our control. These are state mandates. We, as a public board of education, must follow them, and our administration must administer them.
Okay.
So unfortunately, that's not where any flexibility lies.
All right. Well, maybe when you, in the fall, when you have your sessions, the listening sessions, you could help to address, because obviously I'm frustrated, as a parent of three boys in the system.
We have made the observation before, that it was a puzzling way to-
Pardon?
It was a puzzling thing to adopt standards without, we-
Standards were written when they were adopted.
We have to have standards of some sort, there have to be standards. You cannot run a public education system, or a private education system, without standards. Has to be done.
I agree with you.
A series of expectations as to what a particular student is going to learn by a particular point in time. I think we have said before, that there are three things, putting aside whether the standards in themselves are good or bad, and this may be a conversation we want to have in some more detail at this August meeting, or whenever we do it. There are three aspects of this that are puzzling to us as local board of education members. First, the effort to link the performance on standardized tests to teacher evaluations. I don't think any of us thinks, any of us nine thinks that that is a well-thought-out proposal.
I agree.
Second, the lack of good instructional materials that meet the standards. I'm stunned by that, frankly. I figured, I thought it was going to be exactly the opposite. I thought that there was, we're going to be rafts full of good instructional materials that were aligned to the standards four years after they were adopted, or five years after they were, more longer than that, six years after they were adopted. I think I'm personally surprised by that. I'm surprised at the lack of, the SBAQ, the measuring criteria, you would have thought that the performance criteria were going to be developed more or less contemporaneously with the standards. That would make sense to me, that's not the way it was done. So we are stuck with administering what Governor Rell's committed us to do, and it hasn't changed in the last five years. We have fought very hard, frankly, to detach teacher evaluations from the performance testing. I think Dr. Freeman actually had, I think, one of the more influential voices in that process, in the decoupling of the evaluation process from the performance testing. It's just a terrible idea, but that's the playing field that we're on right now, and now separately, totally separately from the content of these standards themselves.
Okay, well, maybe you can understand my frustration when you say for five years, you've expected something, and you're disappointed after five years. It does make me feel good, as a taxpayer, and a citizen of this town, that has three boys in public schools, to get one chance to go through it. So, a couple other things. One is with International Baccalaureate, could you give me an inception-to-date expense?
Sorry?
International Baccalaureate, would you give me an inception-to-date number that you've spent?
To date, we have probably spent $20,000 or $30,000 so far.
On exploration.
And most of that was underwritten by the GFFE. There was a grant from the GFFE. The Board of Education has set aside approximately $45,000 in this upcoming school year to continue our work to prepare for a decision about International Baccalaureate program.
So I'm sorry, I missed the prior figure, the one-
It was approximately $20,000 or $30,000, a significant amount of which was underwritten by the GFFE in a grant.
It was not paid by tax money, in other words, it was paid by private foundation.
Understand. And then the 45 will come out of taxes?
That's, money's moving forward, set aside in this year's budget, yes.
And then, before adopting the program, you'll put that to vote, hopefully?
It will be part of the board's deliberation in this year's budget cycle. It will be voted on by this board, as to whether or not it's to be part of the budget that they put forward, and then it would be voted on by the entire community as part of this school budget prepared, and voted on at referendum this coming April.
And I think we actually committed to having a series of public meetings on that specific issue.
There's already at least two board workshops where it's tentatively been scheduled, and Mr. Masenti and his staff have been tasked with bringing it out publicly in front of this community, so they have a deeper understanding of what it would mean if we were to move in that direction.
Perfect. And my last one, I'd like to go just make a couple comments on the survey. Again, you know, the school year starts when it does, kids get one shot at going through the next school year. If you're looking for information, I say sooner the better. I would imagine you're all very educated enough to put together 20, 25 questions, you have expertise, you have good questions regarding the way numbers look and don't look. I would imagine there's a statistics teacher in the district that can help you formulate the proper way to do it. Get one out as soon as possible. Maybe I'm the only one who has seemingly odd questions, that there are no answers to, or is the only one frustrated, I don't know. But again, sooner the better, more information flow. Don't worry about scripted questions that get you to an answer that may look good, or may help to change perceptions. Go for reality, go for the truth. We're talking about five years' worth of frustration, let's get some good communication. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Bauer, 60, Cambridge Way in Guilford. In regards to the process of our discontinuing conversation in the local survey, I'd like to ask you, the board and administration, to remember how some of these conversations started. It has been stated that the majority of Guilford parents are pleased with the changes in our classrooms, and with the implementation of the Common Core, and its accompanying initiatives. It's been stated that only a small number of us are not. It's been stated that we do not want to rush the process of distributing, writing a survey. I would respectfully say that the only thing rushed in this process has been the implementation of the Common Core standards, rather the forced adoption of them, than the implementation of them. Parents have been asking questions for over two years. Not once, to this date, to my knowledge, have we had a successful sit-down forum survey, somebody asking, how is it going for your child? Is your child happy? Is your child engaged? Is your child challenged? Is your instruction different? Have you, what have you noticed since the Common Core came with the SBA? This is the mission of Guilford Public Schools, this is your job! I read the evaluations from teachers, from here and there, from the state of the school, not from teachers, I'm sorry, from the administration, the state of the schools, evaluating how we are doing. How can you evaluate how we are doing, without asking the parents? As a taxpayer, I am 100% opposed to paying anyone money that could be going to my children's classrooms to write this survey. I would agree that eventually, it would be the hope that we would take action on some of the responses. But I believe that first, we need a baseline measure. If I am truly one of the fringe group of parents, if the 20 of us sitting here are the only parents unhappy, I promise I'll be back at this podium to say, you were right and I was wrong. 95% of the parents in this town are very pleased with how this is going. I don't think that's the case. I don't think it's asking too much to simply ask parents, how is this going for your child, your children? Without having to pay somebody to do it, to take more time. I would say, you send out this survey now, the results of that survey, with very simple questions, can then formulate a second survey, if you would like, potentially, then we can say, is this something we should outsource, to then determine what action we should take. Maybe there's more concern at the elementary level, maybe there's more concern at the high school level. I don't know. But right now, we have very little data. The fact that no other school, or school system, or district, whether in Connecticut or nationwide, has done this, to me, is absolutely irrelevant. I believe that this district tries to be progressive, and enjoys being progressive in other venues, and I would say that every district should be doing this. This affects every single child, and every single classroom, in this state, in Guilford. And we elicited, and spent much more time finding out what people were thinking about full-day kindergarten, than we are with this, which is a much more broad-based concern. As far as pinpointing and soliciting who we're going to get to participate in this survey, I would say that every single parent in Guilford deserves a survey. It's not fair to say, we're not going to give one to Laura Bauer, because we know what she's going to say. Every single, so what, you know what I'm going to say. Every single parent should get an opportunity to respond. If they choose to respond, they do, and if they don't, they don't. The 400 people that signed that kindergarten petition had a stake in kindergarten. If people choose to get involved, they choose to get involved. I don't think, at this point, it is fair to keep pushing this timeline further and further and further. There are many people who are well-informed, there are some that are not, there are some that never will be. That is just the way it is, and there are some that are blissfully happy. So let's find out what's going on, let's find out where we need to focus our efforts, so then we can make actionable items. And please stop, I don't enjoy, you don't enjoy hearing from me, I am sure, and I don't enjoy coming here every month, asking the same questions. We've been having the same conversation. When are we going to hear what parents have to say, what our concerns are? You don't have to even do anything about it. So I am asking that this board not pay, not even, not consider paying, at this point, someone to formulate this survey. I look around this room, and see highly educated people, who are capable of drafting a simple survey, targeting baseline information, and sending it out via paper or email, and then those responses can help target the discussions that Dr. Freeman is talking about. We have somewhere to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just took the opportunity, pause, to reach out to a member of the class of 2014, who took the seventh grade algebra class, and confirmatory of what Dr. Keen said, there were a lot of people in that class. In fact, he said there were over 20- In fact, he said there were over twenty people in that class. And I just would like the Board to ask if they've thought about the opportunity cost of reducing that number of twenty down to one for the coming year.
I'm sure that topic is going to be part of what the study that we commissioned is going to look at. Others?
Jim Wall, thirteen sixty-four Little Meadow Road. My question about the Common Core, because I remember the first meeting I went to and I asked the question, I said, "Is this Guilford's Common Core, National Common Core, California, Illinois?" I was told it was Guilford. How much flexibility is there to make it Guilford's Common Core? You're saying the state determines a lot of it. Is there flexibility with Guilford?
The standards are the standards. They are the standards that were developed by the National Governors Association that say what a second grader should learn in mathematics by the end of the second grade year. The Common Core does not dictate, however, the methods to reach those standards. So the expectations, if you will, are the same for California and here for a second-grade math student. But each district is empowered to write its own curriculum, i.e. the methods for getting to the endpoint, which is, I think, one of the struggles, frankly. You know, it's local control versus, not local control. They gave municipalities, their local districts, the ability to develop their own methods. Some have done a better job with that than others. If you look at the Governors' Task Forces report, a third of the districts in Connecticut haven't even finished writing their curriculum, and we're a third, we're a year into the implementation.
And this is a district that's always been high-achieving. So when I take a look at us adopting these, I know we have to adopt them, but there has to be flexibility built in. And it's the same thing that I asked last year, and people ask, "Seventh-grade algebra", guess what? Why not? What is the issue with that?
Well, we are going to be talking about that. I know that's been a topic, and I know that's something, my kids are in that, affected by this, frankly. I have a little bit of information about what exactly the track is, and so I'm aware of what's going on. It is a question that I think we, the Board has asked, what are the differences under the curriculum, what are the expectations, the goals, if you will, of the Common Core standards? How can they be fit in? And what's the impact? What is it going to lead to? What is it not going to lead to? That's something that we have been very clear that we expect to get answers on.
I mean, the other question is, what is our process and what has been decided as far as changes to what is passed down to us on the Common Core? Is there a process that we have when we take a look at something that says, "Guess what? This isn't working"? Is there a timeline established that says, "We're going to make this change at this time and move it through quick"? Or do we sit on it for a year?
It depends on what the "what" is.
Right. But is there a process in place that we have this right now to say, "Look, this isn't working. We're going to make this change. Here's the timeline, and it's going to be quick"? Or is it going to be a process where we're going to sit on it for a year and just observe and say, "Well, let's take a look at it next year or the year after"? We have to, I mean, if this was implemented so quickly, we have to have the flexibility built in to make changes quickly, right?
It actually wasn't really implemented that quickly, to be honest. This was adopted in...
If I asked any of you, what you knew as Board members, when this thing was implemented, your knowledge would be very limited on this, I'm sure of it.
When it was implemented or when it was adopted? I'll agree with you as to when it was adopted.
Yes.
Hundred percent agree with that.
Right.
Because, I mean, you know, we're going to have another meeting, and I'm happy to... We got no input when they were adopted. When the state of Connecticut adopted these in two thousand nine, in two thousand ten, not a single local board that I'm aware of, certainly I can speak for us, was asked for its opinion on the Common Core state standards. They have no public hearings. We had, our process for adopting the physics textbook allowed for more public input than the adoption of the standards in two thousand nine and two thousand ten. That's absolutely a fact. However, I think, so I agree with you on that. On the other hand, I think that since two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, I think we've been pretty involved in what they mean and what the difference is in, you know, the whole rationale of them. If you adopt, if you concur with what the proponents of the standards say, that they are designed to further critical analysis as opposed to rote memorization, drill-and-kill, that's just in a sentence, I guess, what the proponents of it would say is the value of them. We were already heading down that road with the principles of learning that we started using in two thousand six, that just memorizing facts is not what we wanted to train our kids to do. We wanted them to be able to critically analyze issues and convey and communicate the results in a coherent way, because that's what's expected out in the world today. It's not, you know, being able to say, you know, pie to a hundred places isn't going to get anybody a job today. It's just, it's not the skill set that was needed. So we already really began working on the critical analysis part of it eight years ago. So I think that the Board, I think, I agree with you, with the adoption of the standards themselves, we had no involvement. They did that on their own. They didn't ask for anybody's input, the state. Since then, though, I think we've actually had a, you know, you never have enough information. I think the State Department was actually pretty honest, and I don't know if you've read the recommendations yet of the task force, but I think the State Department was pretty honest with saying, you know, we could have worked with local boards more effectively and got the word out more effectively. I absolutely agree.
I did look at it, and I was amazed that it was professionally done, and there were so many questions about why I couldn't choose this option or this option or this option. Because I do agree that we shouldn't have to fund, have to send this out and do a survey and pay for it. We should have something internal from the Board and input from a focus groups, community, whatever it is, to get this thing out, to get the questions out sooner rather than later. It doesn't have to be professional. It doesn't have to be that detailed. It's like the previous speaker said, "Let's just get the questions out there. If you want to follow up with something a little bit later to get in more detail, that's fine. But let's get the opinions out there. It's easy to send it out."
Well, I think if I understand what your point is, is what continues to confuse me, if, and I don't mean to keep talking about Algebra I in the seventh grade, but it's a good example. If we had a high-level course in math offered to seventh graders and the Common Core is a set of standards and it doesn't dictate how we teach those standards, then why wouldn't we take the chance that what we were doing at high levels would achieve those standards instead of making the changes?
I mean, I think the theory is that the Common Core changed the middle-grade math standards, correct me if I'm wrong, cut me off here.
Correct.
Changed them in a way that, and made them more rigorous to put more content, more deep content into the fifth and sixth grade and seventh grade areas so that now you can't accelerate as easily as we did before. I think that's the statement. Now, I'd like to get, again, I'd like to hear what...
And at the same time, Algebra I has changed too. It's very different than it was when we had twenty kids or thirty kids in seventh-grade algebra, because now we use a state model, Algebra I curriculum, and it's much, much more rigorous. It includes a lot of Algebra II, what used to be Algebra II, in that. So not only is, you know, everything has been said, "Okay, the United States, we need to up math and science. We need to, you know, really do better." And so the rigor has increased, and now we're saying, "Hey, the kids, we are going to meet their needs with this or with this and part of A3." And, you know, and if we don't have that kind of compacted course for them, they're going to miss some really critical information that they're really going to need.
One of the major proponents of the math standards in the Common Core was the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics.
Correct.
They said that, "Yeah, sure, you could put a class labeled as Algebra I or, you know, you could do it in an earlier grade, but we're skipping over too much. We're missing too many foundational mathematics." I'm just, that's what they said.
I know. I do think, I mean, one of the things that's frustrated me a little bit about this is when you look at the end result, and specifically, I mean, you know, Calc BC comes up, but that was an incredibly successful course in terms of just the achievement level of those kids on AP exams. I mean, those were, you know, that's really what we're shooting for, right? People really understand this stuff, and they go on to great colleges. So whether there were gaps or whatever, they filled them in. It was working. And I guess what's a bit ironic to me about the report from the task force is that they define success as having changed so quickly that that is success, whereas, you know, it may be the opposite, that certain districts where things were working, the longer you delay implementation, you know, the better it may be for at least the adaptation of that district to the standards. So, you know, I do have to say, I share some frustration about disrupting things that appear to have been working in our district for a long time in a rush to comply with, you know, with these standards. And, I mean, at this point, we are where we are. We need to move forward, but I think we need to be cognizant of, you know, there are different approaches to implementation, and that's really what we're asking about.
But I think this is an example of what you're asking for, Jim, and I think that the evidence of the response and the change is in this example. We went and we wrote a new math curriculum to be in alignment with the Common Core state standards. Now, we had no choice but to be in alignment with the standards. But the people who articulated our math curriculum were Guilford math teachers. I did not sit on those committees. The Board members did not sit on those committees. So the curriculum was rewritten to be in alignment with the new standards and with the shifts. So there are new standards at every grade level, and there are different kinds of standards. There are content standards, and then there are habits of thought standards. And then there are the shifts, the instructional shifts that Mr. Blas spoke to, that the ability to be a problem solver, the ability to think more deeply and talk about what you're doing. When our teachers articulated the new curriculum to be in alignment, one of the first things that they looked at when they stepped back was that the expectations at every level along the way, from K all the way through to the high school, were ramped up. Algebra now is much more rigorous than it had been before, and seventh and sixth grade particularly had this increase in rigor. So when we looked at those changes, we said, as Mr. Blas articulated, "We can't keep taking thirty students at the sixth-grade level and jumping them right into algebra." It would have been malpractice to do that, because the seventh-grade content that they were skipping was more rigorous than what they had skipped before, and the place where we would be landing them in algebra was now truly a high-school algebra course and was more rigorous than where we were landing them before. So the comparison to older students who skipped seventh grade and were okay isn't the same comparison anymore, because we've changed those expectations. In the first year of implementation of that curriculum, we went out and had a really rigorous process to now try to find materials to support those increased levels of math rigor. And we had a split result. We found a resource that we're very confident in, K through five. We haven't found one yet for six through eight that we're confident in, but we're going to keep looking. And along the way, now that we've had students with at least one year of that more rigorous instruction behind them, we have also said, "Now, we've got to be checking these kids and making sure that we are not holding anybody back." And there, in fact, has been a student who has been identified, who is ready and capable, and should her parents agree, will skip seventh grade and go into that eighth-grade algebra, which is exactly the way it started under the old curriculum with very small numbers who were identified. And if I can predict, I would predict that as we get more years behind us with students coming through the second grade, third grade, fourth grade, with the more rigorous experience at those levels, we will grow back to the period where you accelerate children through. But I have to say that when you make the change to keep skipping kids forward, because that's what we did before, without looking at the new expectations, would have been wrong. Have we made a conservative decision by making sure everybody got through? And I want to remind everybody, seventh grade still has two levels of rigor. We didn't eliminate the high-seventh-grade course and just have one common course. Students in seventh grade are placed in a seventh-grade class or they're placed in one that combines all of seventh grade and most of the eighth-grade content. To suggest that that's an easy class is false. So we had two levels of math in the seventh grade two years ago. We have two levels of math in the seventh grade now. We allowed kids beginning about five years ago to place into eighth-grade algebra if they were individually ready. We're doing that now. Will we have more kids, more ready, as we transition? Yes. Will we have better assessment tools to help us make those decisions, the interim tools and the results of smarter balance? Yes. Jim, I agree with you 100%. You've got to make the change, and then you have to assess the change and be flexible enough to adapt to it. I would suggest that the example of that adaptation is right there in Algebra I. I absolutely agree. I've got seventh-grade students who are going through this transition this year as well. I know what parents in seventh grade are experiencing, but we're going through the transition. And in Guilford, we're doing it thoughtfully, intentionally, and conservatively. Yes, I would rather slow kids down than rush kids forward and then find out in eleventh grade that they have gaps, that they've missed instruction, because filling those gaps in is much more difficult than accelerating later once you've got a solid foundation.
It is for the majority of students, but if you're looking at high-potential students, you know that you've got probably twenty or thirty students that can handle algebra in seventh grade. I know you're telling me that the course that's offered is more rigorous. Algebra has been around for a long time. Are you changing the prerequisites to Calculus BC in high school so that they can actually go through without having to double up?
Yes. Yes. There are tracks that allow students to get to AP Calc BC without having to double up mathematics at the high school level. There's an option to double math and do it in one way. There's another option where we've created exactly the same thing of a compacted class, where we have taken seventh and eighth-grade content and said, "These kids..." And it's a difference in saying they're ready to do algebra or saying they're ready to do more. We're not saying that a sixth grader who hasn't had all the seven content is ready to, the seventh-grade content, is ready to do algebra. What we're saying is that kid's ready to do almost two full years of math work in the seventh and eighth-grade curriculum. There is now a compacted course that has been designed at the high school, along with changes to the prerequisites, where students will be able to do pre-calc and calc A in a compacted course so that they can still take AP Calc BC by their senior year. So we have changed the pace with which a student goes from K to AP Calc BC, but it's all still there. I've also argued that if there's a problem about electives, and if the real issue in doubling up math courses means that you don't get to experience all the electives that you want, then that's a different question. And we may have to look at scheduling at the high school. We may have to look at how many classes a student can load. But I want to be careful about artificially saying that the elective question has to be solved on the math curriculum. Math isn't responsible for how many other electives a student can get. It may have an impact, but it's not the only variable. And we've got to be careful about being boxed into false decisions, because math has always driven those before. We need to look at other opportunities. I've been having conversations with the superintendent about Madison about offering collaborative night courses that high school students can opt into, not necessarily to do a summer course to gain credit, but can you do electives in night courses? We may have to change Connecticut education law, because right now we can't offer a credit-bearing course that doesn't have a school bus attached to it. But we want to look at ways to go beyond some of those components. We've got to be careful about blaming the Common Core for everything or saying that math or the Common Core is the only solution to some of our challenges. There may be other ones.
Right. But if this is our Common Core, this is Guilford's Common Core...
No. No. It is...
That's what I was told, that the flexibility is built in there. I know we have to follow state statutes.
It's the Guilford curriculum.
State statutes, okay. The curriculum. Six through eight, there's an issue with math. Is that going to get resolved? You were saying that one through five is okay, six through eight is a challenge.
Yes, we're going to continue searching for a math resource this year. Absolutely.
Well, how quick will that be? Because the time runs out for a certain number of students as you go through the process. The second graders might be able to benefit from that. The students that are in it right now, unfortunately, are the experiment.
So, Jim, we've been criticized for choosing the resource at the K through five level too quickly, because people would suggest that we should have waited longer until something better came around. We will select a six-through-eight product. When our teachers find one that they agree, we'll... When our teachers find one that they agree, we'll support them instructionally and help them do the work that they need to do, but no sooner. We don't want to buy something simply because any book is better than no book or because somebody stamped it with Common Core state standards. We made a valiant effort and the group had to say, there's nothing out there that's better than what we're using right now.
Do we take most of our materials?
So we will start again.
Do we take most of the materials from New York State, or no?
No, we use the existing materials that we have. Again, it's not that we don't have a 6 through 8 math resource. We don't have a new 6 through 8 math resource. So we are essentially using the one we had two years ago, and teachers are tearing it apart and reordering it and trying to use it in the best way that they can fit it to the new curriculum. We are supplementing with materials from all over the place, including Engage New York, because New York School Systems has an incredible amount of money and a bunch of people who are solely dedicated to writing their own materials. Instead of waiting for somebody else to publish, they started writing their own. And they're not perfect, but they're there to supplement what we're using now with the text that we have. We have a position to put a coach into the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade level to support the teachers instructionally. And if you were here earlier, you heard us say that we made an offer, but we're back out on the street searching for somebody to fill that position. And we will be searching for the materials as soon as we get our teachers back on the ground. But I would rather, I would rather take the time and make a thoughtful decision than rush in either of those cases. We have to make the right choices. But I again say, it goes right to your point. We know we need a resource to support that work. The change, I believe, is evident in what's happening in math right now. We set the curriculum, and then we went out and purchased the resource. Now that we've got the resource and the students are into the new pacing, we're checking our students to see how they're doing. When they're ready to accelerate, we will accelerate them. But accelerating isn't always the answer if you're missing stuff along the way. Sometimes doing more stuff to compacting is the right answer. And in that math progression chart that I know I emailed to you, it's got arrows and lines and colors because some classes are compacted, other classes are overlapped when you do two at the same time. There's variety. There's different choices to get to AP Calc BC. But we didn't take anything away. It's all still there. The routes are different.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Yes, Dirk Goss, 800 Village Walk. I'd like to ask the board to think about the language that they're hearing tonight. We've heard the 7th grade algebra was evidently not very good, even though I know anecdotally that many of the people that were in those classes have gone to top-level universities and are majoring in STEM areas, STEM majors. And what we're hearing is someone talking passionately about what they're going to do. They dismailed, they aligned something out of existence, and they're telling us what they're going to do. Now, I'm not saying that we can't do these things, but the point is we haven't done them yet. And to malign things that worked in the past, to disintegrate them, is not the way to go.
I don't think anybody maligned anything, and nobody said that the, that the.
Bill.
The content standards changed. That's all that was said.
Bill, we've heard that the new algebra is going to be more complete, or is going to go much farther than it used to.
I'd say it has different content.
Okay. But I'm just saying, the people that went through the historical program have been very successful, and they've done these things. We're not talking about things that are going to happen in the future or that may happen next year. There's a track record, there was a program with a track record that was aligned out of existence.
Okay. Others? That's fine. Take your time. We're not getting paid by the hour.
Not getting paid at all.
Was that true?
32 County Road. So I just want to say thank you for all of your work. I think you guys are doing a great job in a very difficult time. But I was listening to the conversation about the survey. I've seen drafts of some of the surveys that the board has been looking at, I think. And I don't know if you heard the collective groan over there when the idea of a PR firm came up, but I have to tell you that I just don't think you want that to be in the paper, that you hired a PR firm to help you figure out how to communicate with your parents. And I know that's not the intent, but that very well could be how it plays. I maybe am not in support of a survey at all anymore and thinking that maybe a focus group kind of approach would be better. You know, I am a parent that's been involved in some things that we've done that are kind of huge in this town, and I listen to the community, and I think you guys are all lucky to have the community that you serve. I mean, it's a fabulously involved and educated community. But what's starting to happen around some of these issues we talked about tonight is a little bit of, maybe some feelings of being threatened, a little bit of anxiety as the Common Core implementation is happening. So I would encourage, I would encourage the board to bring the parents in and not come up with a PR firm formulated survey that, you know, we already know what we want our action items to be in. I don't think that's the approach this community will respond to. I think that we need to listen at an organic level, sit down the way we have tonight. Now, it's, you know, it's late, but these parents are still here, and there are not very many of them, and they're probably familiar faces to you, but I think that if we reach out into the community in an open way and they get to hear you, Paul, say, you know, well, we're working on the math and we're trying to match it up. I mean, I think a lot of parents don't know that level of detail, and that would be very helpful for them. But I really, a survey can be a very cold tool. Questions can backfire. People can try, I'm very familiar with this professionally also, and I think that as we dig this hole deeper, it's a worse and worse idea. And I'd be happy to help you guys organize some focus groups in the community. There can be highlighted things you take away from a focus group that are useful, that can, you can call them actionable items. Regardless, they're useful, and you don't have to measure yourself over a certain period of time or any certain way. It shouldn't really be like that, but I think our community wants to be heard, and I think the frustration about why do we have to wait till October, November, is about, parents are kind of, you know, surprised and maybe very worried about what they're seeing come home from homework. And the longer you make people wait to speak, it makes it feel like maybe you don't want to hear it. Now, I'm sure that's not what's going on, but I think, I think maybe that's what I'm feeling from our community, you know. And I, my 6th grader, my just graduated 6th grader wanted me to let you know that that switch stuff is still at Baldwin. It's at the end of the year, it was still in the school, so it just, I dragged it through the whole meeting as a public policy exercise. But anyway, thanks.
Yeah, and I do want to correct, you know, that, I don't know, did you use PR firm? That is not my impression of what, I understand, no, listen. My, I don't, there are companies that do public policy polling, presented objectively, right down the middle, not trying to shade a question, not trying to shade an answer, not trying to only send it out to some people. I mean, my concern with just an email survey standing alone is that if, how many families are there? Five thousand, probably not, 3,000?
3,000 families in the school system.
Yeah. So how do we ensure, to the extent practicable, that we get a representative sample of those families responding?
No, I don't think you do either of those. I just don't think you do an email survey or anything.
Okay, maybe.
I think that that is too top-down.
All right, so you're off the survey completely.
I am baby backwater, all of it. Yeah, I don't think so. I think that just feels cold and it feels like, you know, like you have the answers that you want built into the questions. People may feel threatened. I think you want to just, people need to be heard, and I think that's, they're waiting and asking for a chance to be heard.
And, well, I mean, we've committed to doing seven, eight, whatever it is, eight, 10 meetings between August and.
Although you talk about a biased sample, I mean, the people that come out to those groups.
That's true.
Yep.
You're right.
Well, but another thing you can do is PR ahead of time. In the paper, we will have these sessions, you know, really make sure parents know it goes in the backpacks and all of that, you know.
Well, and if it's combined with back-to-school nights, that.
That's huge.
Is highly likely to lead to some greater involvement.
Absolutely.
You get a better turnout.
I've had two emails on this issue since the last meeting. And, you know, now, I understand that there are people that feel very strongly about it, and they may be representative. I mean, I haven't had two emails from people who say the opposite.
Well, what it may be is just that people want to understand it better.
Then maybe.
They want a chance to have an interaction and understand what's Common Core, what's not, what, you know, what are you doing to math? My daughter went through all those math tests in 6th grade, and I had some questions about that. I mean, you know, there's questions. So, but a survey is not an interactive tool. So a focus group might just be a more comfortable thing. And as you said, Paul, you know, you could evolve what you're doing as you go through those meetings, what you hear may make you then want to focus on another area in the next meeting. That's a great idea. I thought that was a great idea. Anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Anybody else? Please.
Thatcher Zoo, 72 Church Street, and I would encourage to do as much as possible with parent feedback. So I would do a survey, and I would do the focus groups. I would get it out as soon as possible, as some of the parents have encouraged you to do. And major, you know, major hospitals, Yale University, Connecticut Children's Medical Center, they all put out surveys, people's experience, you know, that they have in the hospital. They're major institutions. I don't mean to say that, you know, government or the Board of Ed should always act like a business, but I don't, I think this is one case where you can get it done, you can get it done inexpensively, and it can be very effective. It's not going to be perfect first time around, but, you know, if you do one in the fall, one in the, you know, in the winter, it'll get better each time. The data will come back quicker, you'll start to see the same things. You know, even if there's one issue that comes up where you can fix it quickly, that comes up in the survey and it comes up in the focus groups, it's better than a year from now. And then I have one question. There was a meeting that I was a part of last, I can't remember what time it was, there was about 60 parents in the room. The frustration level with, I think it was over the High Achievement Learners, was sort of palpable in the room, and I'm curious as to what follow-up or what came out of that meeting.
Sure, a couple of things. We, this year, changed the way that we track and the way that we support students who are getting differentiated instruction, students who have plans to support their different needs and their greater need for challenge. Additionally, we brought together a small group of community members who advised on a couple of proposals that we received, and we have contracted with Dr. James Borland from Teachers College, who will be here later this month and is going to do an outside study of how we support our high-achieving students, very similar to the outside study that we did around supports for special education students. We, a couple times tonight, noted how we are looking at individual students and finding ways to support them within math within their schools. So in a couple different conversations, there were students who were noted who are accelerating beyond what they're doing regularly. We are trying to do what we've done historically better, and we're bringing in an outside expert to look at us and give us advice, tell us what we do well and what we could do better. We expect to have a report from him by December. It worked very well for us around special education services. We think it'll work for us around high-achieving or high-potential students as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Uh, I'm sorry, somebody's coming up, I'm sorry.
Hi, Pam Medvecky, 245 Flat Meadow Road. I wanted to speak to the survey. I think it's essential. I think it is, it doesn't have to be a, it's not, wouldn't be a standalone survey. It doesn't have to be the end-all and be-all of data collection, self-selective or baseline or whatever you want to call it. It's real-time information. It is important that parents in this community receive, receive that email. Receive that email that says, we care what your experience has been. We have a few questions for you, if you have time to answer them. I think that that's really important. I think it's not just important, I think it is urgent. This is information we need now. It can't wait, it can't wait until fall. It can't wait until October or November. Let that be additional information that can be gleaned. I think that this, the education level in this room, the access to things we have, that they're, these are not complex questions, I think, that we want to know. It's a customer satisfaction survey. How do you like our product? Are, you know, are you challenged? Are you engaged? Those are the aspects that we need, that can be very, that are important to know on scale. What is, what is the scale level of your child's engagement? How has it changed? What have you noticed? I think that those things are not really, it's simple information that would go a long way to, to informing the year. Nor do I think it's necessarily a one-time thing. You know, Common Core came on like a full force, full tilt, and felt pretty quick and furious. We expected a lot of our teachers, we've expected a lot of our students. There has been massive change in our classrooms, and I think with any kind of massive change, you want to have some kind of feedback, you know? It's all pretty close to everyone here in this room. You know, perhaps we're a little, you might be a little so close to it that you don't see some of the nuances. And, but regardless, it's that collective experience of so many students, so many parents. Give them a chance. You know, I think that it's information that is very useful, would be very useful and helpful to helping us do better and be responsive and shape the conversations to come. Focus groups, I think, can be certainly a great part of the conversation, but I think in, when you think about advertising a focus group, you might, you're probably going to see a lot of the same faces that you see coming here, that you hear from in a letter. You'll probably see more than that, I hope, and I, but a survey reaches those who would not, who do care and who do have opinions and who may not feel comfortable stepping out of that box, and it reaches them where they live, on their phone and on their tablet. So I think it's important. And just briefly, I wanted to just speak to the, there's been a lot, a little bit of talk about the middle school math and the fact that Algebra is, Algebra I is going to be available to one 7th grader next year. I have an 8th grader and, who has been on the advanced math track, say, and was very curious to, or an incoming 8th grader, and was very curious to see where we are right now with the math seems to be. So we have, we're, we have one 7th grader next year who will be offered the opportunity for Algebra I. And then on the advanced track, we have, I received a letter today that said, 44% of 8th graders will be in the advanced math class next year. And I'm not sure, it seems like with an advanced math class, we should be somewhere between 1 and 44% of the student body. I mean, if historically we know that there have been, say, 20 kids in BC Calc, that's sort of a good gauge, I think, about how many roughly kids would benefit from that sort of advancement, that sort of tracking. And so when, I think when we find ourselves in a place where we have one on a track and 44%, that we, there might be some room for tweaking. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Others? Okay, we actually do have still several agenda items, although they're going to be in executive session. So why don't we go in, is there a motion to go into executive session for the items on the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will be coming, we'll be going into executive session for all of these items, and then we will be coming into public session only to adjourn. We will not be hosting, taking any more public votes. So thank you very much.